I'd like to call Board of Trustees regular meeting Monday, March 2nd, 2020, 6:30 to order. Please rise and turn me to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unregapped, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, recording secretary here, Roderick. Rule of meeting agenda.
I'll make a motion we approve the meeting agenda as presented.
Second. Thank you. Motion by Treasurer Arnold, supported by Trustee Clifford. Any questions for discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Number four, approval of minutes, 2/3, 2020 to 18/2020.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from February 3rd, 2020 and February 18th, 2020.
Second. Motion by Trustee Gurley, supported by Trustee Clifford. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Public announcements. Any public announcements at this time? No public announcements. Public comment. Any public comment at this time? Public comment. Number seven, consent agenda. All items listed under this consent agenda are considered routine by the Township Board and will be enacted by one motion. According to established Township meeting rules, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the Board or public shall request at or prior to the meeting, in which event the Chair of the meeting may remove such items from the consent agenda for discussion and consideration under Agenda Item Number Eight below. Approval of the consent agenda shall be backed by majority roll call vote to those present voting.
Orders and bills, I have one correction to the bills that you all received, and yet it's under Lennox Township tax account, built parcels together in option 14,372.06, which changes our bills list total to $387,187.65.
What was that number again, Len? Okay, thank you.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the orders and bills and totaling the amount of $387,187.65.
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Gurley, supported by Treasurer Arnold. Once again, any questions? Discussion? Deputy Clerk Rockwell, please.
Gurley?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. There have been no items removed from consent agenda, no unfinished business. New business, letter A. TJ Enterprises LLC Annual Renewal Request Providing Permit. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Oops, is that? Should be a little switch right there.
I'm Brett Clippersack with TJ, here to answer any questions you have on our annual mining permit.
Mr. Safe, real quick, sir. Your recommendation, Mr. Safe?
Good evening. Yes, just a normal renewal for the TJ mining permit. They're within, they're removal of some limits, and I believe they're at 86% at this point. So this is their annual renewal. They come in, I believe they went through the Plan Commission.
It did, it went through the Plan Commission.
And we recommend approval.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Piper's egg?
I have none.
Motion. I make a motion we approve TJ Enterprises LLC renewal request for their mining permit to extend for another year.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Clifford, supported by Clerk Candell. Deputy Clerk, what call, please?
Clifford?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Letter B, DPW Employee Request. W. Superintendent, leave me.
Uh, good evening.
Pull that mic closer, please. Give us a quick summary of your request.
Uh, good evening.
Yeah, it's on. You can hear it, yeah.
No, it wasn't, but it's not the one.
It's on now. It was off.
Uh, good evening. In front of you, you have my first shot at.
An ad I'd like to get from the other one.
Thank you. Thank you, girl. All right, let's try this again. In front of you, you have my first shot at, an ad that I'd like to have put in the paper to add an additional employee to the DPW. Typically, we add at least a seasonal person. I would like to work towards adding an additional person year round. With the increase of properties, duties, so forth, we're getting busier and we're falling behind. So it's time to add an additional person. Any questions for the DPW superintendent?
It says part-time. What, how many hours do you, are you considering part-time?
Well, depending on the time of year and what's going on, we only work a 30-hour week, so that would probably be the max.
I'm just asking because it does also say no benefits, and our 30-hour-a-week employees usually get benefits, so I was just trying to get an idea.
And I may be mistaken, but I thought we've had 30-hour-a-week employees before on an interim basis with no benefits.
If they were considered a seasonal employee. But if this person's not considered a seasonal employee and they work 30 hours a week, that's a different class and they do get benefits.
If the Board wants to...
I would suggest that we consider that because of one reason. We have some issues coming up to where we're going to have a single person, running the whole department. We have, we'll have one employee at the department. First off, it's a dangerous situation with only one employee working out there by himself. We have to have two people. We have to have people for paperwork. We're running the whole department right now with two people, and one is by themselves a lot of the time. Not a good scenario to have. With the situation coming up with an employee taking time off for medical reasons and stuff, we gotta have two people. I would consider this a full-time position. That can be changed after the fact if we have to, if we have to work for the person, but I don't see us not having work with what's coming down the pipeline here at this time.
Is it possible to list that as part-time until we, this particular employee, no matter who it is, would be canned support?
As long as he has the leeway to have them work the hours he needs them to work.
Correct. And that's why I listed this as part-time. Like I indicated to some, I'd like to start this out as a part-time individual to work it into a full-time slot.
I just don't want anybody to be surprised after the fact and go, "Oh, wow, this guy works so much while." It's because we only have one person from the department at this time.
I'm just concerned that we are, if we have a part-time person working 30 hours a week, we're going to have to create a new class of employee if they're not getting benefits.
And we'll probably have to do that. I'll tell you, worst-case scenario, we'll probably have to do that because I don't, I don't know else what we can do, but you cannot run a water department, public works, water and sewer department with one person.
I wasn't expecting that we would. I was just trying to clarify the no benefits portion.
Well, let me see, in that case, if, at that, that point in time, he hires, lists him as part-time until decides if he's going to keep him, is that possible to do? And then, and then just if we give him the benefits from that point, or make a decision on the benefits at that point in time, you know?
As long as they're working less than 30 hours as a part-time employee, there will be no benefits. But once they hit that 30-hour-a-week mark, that's when benefits are normally offered.
So what do we do, put her at 29 and a half? It's, here's, here's the one thing we have to make sure everybody's aware of. We take that risk by having one person in the department as is.
I am not suggesting that we don't have a person in that department. I'm just trying to clarify that.
What I want everybody to have knowledge of is because there will be only one person in that department, if we have another person, if the other person doesn't show up for some reason medically or illness or whatever, and the other person has to work, we have to man that department one way, shape, or another. It could push somebody over those hours, not by our choice.
Then I think the safest thing for us to do at this point is to create another class of employee that works 30 hours that is not entitled to benefits. I don't know what we call them, but...
Is that our first way to find out if that, if that can be done?
Yes, we would, but we can't have somebody working 30 hours a week and being eligible for benefits and not giving it to them. So it's, you know?
Is that what it says in our bylaws?
We have several classes of employees. Seasonal employees do not work 30 hours a week, so they do not get benefits. But once an employee reaches 30 hours a week, they are eligible for benefits. So all I'm saying is if we're putting him at, putting this person at part-time and they actually work 30 hours a week, we can't offer them benefits one week and not the next. It has to be persisted.
Not an option.
Right, right. So we have to determine what class of an employee this person will be.
Be able to create a class that's going to last until his illness is over.
That's what we have to do. That's what we have to do, and it's just trying to get it straight.
Right now, we're faced with, we have to search to try and find somebody to go forward here.
Now make a motion that we approve the DPW employee request for a part-time person at $12 per hour at no benefits, per the request of the DPW supervisor. Support.
Motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Treasurer Arnold. Any questions or discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, sir. 2020 ambulance financing proposal. Mr. White, good evening, sir.
Good evening. Mr. Supervisor, members of the Board, tonight the Township is scheduled to consider proposal to finance a new ambulance for the original Lennox EMS Ambulance Authority. We've done this three other times now, I believe. The promissory note security agreement for this was the same we have used in the past. It was developed by, actually, I believe, developed by a previous legal counsel. So we just use that agreement and place the new numbers into that agreement as well as the dates for payment and payoff of the vehicle. The new ambulance will cost, the ambulance will be about $240,000 a ride just after the first part of July. The, this, this proposal also calls for the EMS to pay off early a loan with the Township, pay off that loan on an ambulance that we have through one of these agreements about nine months early. And this agreement does provide the Township $20,000 over the life of the agreement in interest payments on the ambulance. With that, with respect to the Trust Board approval for the financing agreement for the ambulance.
And this, this money includes the payoff early of the 2014?
We're, we're paying that off out of general fund dollars. This would be all towards the new vehicle and, and some of the equipment that goes in.
Okay. These, these agreements have worked great for us in the past. We finance our own vehicles through ourselves. We're not paying outside parties' interest. We make money. We take care of our own financing, and it works, it works well for us.
It does. I, we did this before. So, yeah, I, I don't, I don't have a problem.
As far exceeds the money we're, I can pose this to the Treasurer, as far exceeds the interest we're getting from the bank, correct?
And there's sufficient money in the EMS loan account now from previous purchases that that money can be freed up for that purpose. No, we'll come onto the general fund and just...
Perfect.
Revolving out of your loan account anyway, so...
Very good. I make a motion we approve the 2020 ambulance financing proposal as presented by Mr. White and paperwork we have in our hands and per past practice.
I second.
I have a motion by Trustee Clifford, supported by Trustee Gurley. Any other questions or discussion? Deputy Clerk Rockwell, please.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, sir. Letter, um, E, McLaren-McCombe Mobile?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's Google here for a second. Fire Department Dispatch Office Remodeling Call. Mr. White, again, sir.
So, Deputy Lieutenant, Lennox Township Fire Department, the dispatch area is kind of, over the years, been moved into an area that really makes it not terribly functional. It's a, it's a very narrow area, almost can't fit a computer, a desk, and a chair in it. We're looking to remodel that area at the fire department and, and provide a, a better working space. Unfortunately, as with many, many other professions, much of what any modern fire service does these days is paperwork. And that, that helps protect the Township from liability and, and ensuring that we have good records for times that we're dealing with things like ISO, which is the, the insurance service review that we'll be going through here in the next, in the upcoming month. So with that, we, we requested to make some modifications to the dispatch area in the building. We received a bid to do that in the amount of $7,120. I will tell you, for the scope of the work, that is a very reasonable price, for the most part because it is being done by one of our local firefighters, who does own a cabinet and small, small remodeling business. He's done work for the fire department in the past, I'm told, and his work has always been satisfactory. So we, we asked him what it would cost to do that, complete that remodel, and that was his cost. The firefighter is actually Brian Klosky. He's been with the department for, I think, a number of years, 25 years at this point in time. So it's my recommendation that we, that the Board approve the remodeling of the dispatch area at the fire department with Specialty Cabinet Manufacturing, Inc., in the amount of $7,120.
Any questions for Mr. White regarding this? And it's going to, this will give you enough room, I should say, Jeff, this is going to give you enough room to do...
To do the work that they need to do. Right now, like you said, right now, the area they're in, where they're having to do their work, really just does not provide them even desk space hardly.
Allison, the other day, it's... To summarize it, they're in a closet right now with no visual, you know, ability to see the bay where...
Yeah. This way, though, they will be able to see, they'll go back by the windows, by the apparatus base, if you recall that part of the building, they'll be able to see out, out of the area where the, where the fire crews are operating, and like I said, give them kind of the whole, what is front half of the, of the chief's office area now to, to take care of the business of operating the fire department. The other room is actually going to be maintained for storage, for, for file storage. So that, that room would become a really great file room for us, where we could put, you know, lateral file drawers to keep papers on the...
Yeah, what papers, you're right. I think it was designed for that in the first place.
I believe so.
All right, any other questions? I have none. I make a motion we approve the fire department dispatch office remodeling proposal.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Clifford, supported by Treasurer Arnold. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. McLaren-McCombe Mobile Clinic Lease Renewal. Mr. White, once again, please, sir.
Yes, following our last meeting, I made contact with McLaren-McCombe Hospital to see what their intentions were with regards to continue storage of their mobile medical unit at our Station Number Two in Lennox Township. The, the hospital was interested in continuing this, this lease agreement, and the hospital actually provided us this, what they called the Fourth Amendment to the lease. This started before Jeff White's time here, but this followed the other documents that had been approved by this Board, year after year, to continue the storage of their vehicle in our facility. The, the hospital does pay the Township for the storage of that, of that vehicle in the facility. I believe the bonus is $650 a month. I did not write that down on my notes, but I believe that to be correct, to keep the unit there. This, I recommend the Township continue to allow McLaren-McCombe Hospital to store their vehicle in our facility so we can continue to collect those lease payments. The, the contract does allow us to basically terminate it at any time should we have a use for that, for that area that the, that the mobile medical unit is currently taking up.
I'll make a motion that we approve the lease renewal to McLaren-McCombe for the storage of their mobile unit for a period of a year. I second.
Motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Trustee Gurley. Once again, any questions? Deputy Clerk Rockwell, please.
Candell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Letter F, Perry Acres Ordinance. Keep standing, this is where man clerk.
Well, it did come through me. It is a, an ordinance that we were asked to approve. It's a tax-exempt ordinance for Perry Acres. Perry Acres is a well-income senior housing, and this, because we are a taxing authority along with the Village of New Haven, the Village of New Haven has passed this ordinance, we also need to pass it as a taxing authority. So we have been in front of you.
Thank you. Questions for Clerk?
Hi, we don't know the ordinance number I need to cite if I might make the motion.
It is Part 56, Ordinance One.
Part 56 dash one?
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion we approve ordinance number 56 dash one, tax-exemption ordinance for Perry Acres.
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Clifford, supported by Trustee Gurley. Other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Letter G, Bramblewood Ordinance.
This is the same as Perry Acres for the same reasons, and it would be ordinance number 56, Part Two. Part 56, Ordinance Two. Sorry, set it backwards.
I make a motion we approve ordinance 56 dash two regarding Bramblewood as tax-exempt.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Clifford, supported by Treasurer Arnold. Once again, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Letter H, Real Estate Broker Record Request. Everybody should have a summary of this gentleman, a quick summary he drove for us. Basically, this is to replace the broker record we had before Clifford Schrader. Can I get ahold of Mr. Schrader? This is a person that if we have questions regarding a property or needs for property that we would engage to help and inquire for us regarding these properties. And that's, that's all it is at this time.
And he would replace the previous gentleman?
Correct.
I make a motion that we approve Mr. Mike Barak from Century 21 Market Tech Realtors as the Realtor of Record for Lennox Township. Second.
Motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Trustee Clifford. Other questions for discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Clerk, aye. High-tech Systems Service Mitel Warranty Support Hatches.
Yes. This is basically our warranty support for our phones through high-tech. This is a one-year agreement, however, I will preface that by saying it is a 30-day cancellation. So I am currently working on trying to get our phones switched over to AT&amp;T, who is our new internet service provider. But until that time, we do need the warranty support on the phone system. So I am at this point requesting that we approve this quote for the support for a year with the knowledge that when I get everything switched over to AT&amp;T, it is revocable.
Any questions?
No, she covered it. I don't have any.
I will make a motion to support the High-tech Systems Service Mitel Warranty Hatches in the amount of $1,349. Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Arnold, supported by Trustee Clifford. Again, any discussion? Deputy Clerk Rockwell, please.
Arnold?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Number 11, public comment. Any public comment at this time?
Good evening, sir.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Supervisor and Board members. My name is Brian Conaway. I'm the public sector, public sector representative for Waste Management. I am the person that manages the curbside trash collection contract for your trash and yard waste, I'm sorry, your trash and recycling. I don't have any issues, just want to stop in and say hello and say good evening to everyone. Typically, if there are any things happening, I'll hear from Jeanette, if you buy email to resolve anything, but I think things are going well, and I totally hope that they are. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Brian. This is Jan Hartway.
Hello, Jan, thanks.
I have a question. A few months ago, you had a new employee that was to help in different areas of depart, different departments?
Could you pull that mic right in for an answer?
You brought up the issue of giving an employee, a new employee, health benefits or insurance for a person that was new to the offices and she was working in different offices. Was that a full-time position? Because I had that, it was?
Yes.
Okay. So now that you offered, you wanted a seasonal employee to work at the DPW, and you insisted on being part-time, so you don't have to pay benefits. But you didn't insist, you didn't say how many hours? Should you have quoted some, like 25 hours, not over 30 hours, for that person to work under the amount of 30 hours, considering multiple time? And that wasn't done? So does that need to be done? You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, absolutely.
We do.
So that was my question.
Well, and you know, like during this, it's typically not a question and answer format, it's public comment, but what we will say is right now, those hours are undeterminable, undeterminable, I believe the Board is saying, based on the work that we have. We have a situation arising where we could only have one person in the water department, so we want to ensure that we have another person ready to go and to work. We don't exactly know the hours needed at this time, but that's what we're getting at. We're trying to make sure that we have a safe parking place, have somebody ready or hired at the time for this to happen. So, because as you know, we only have two people for that department right now, and we're only going to have one person for a little while.
I understand, but you made a point of...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I understand it, but you made a point of not having this person work 30 hours a week and nothing but...
I didn't make that point.
No, the whole board. So I wondered if there was a specific number of hours to...
I can tell you, it wasn't the whole board. It was discuss, there was a discussion regarding hours. The hours are undeterminable right now, but I will, I will tell you, like I said, if, we only have one person in that department, or hire another person, if one doesn't show up, somebody's got to work the full day, has got to work the full week for us here. So I don't know what, the Board will have to address that as it comes.
Thank you.
My point was just that we do not... My point was just that we do not have a section in our employee manual at this time that addresses a thirty-hour, someone who works regularly thirty hours a week and gets no benefits. That was the only thing I was trying to clarify was, did we need to make a new classification of employee? So, you know, this person will get paid according to the hours that they work, and if they are hired with the understanding that there are no benefits, that's kind of the way it is, but we just currently do not have a classification for that type of employee. I was in no way, shape, or form saying that I didn't feel that it was something that we should do, I was just trying to understand where this person would be classified, that's all.
I think we all acknowledge that, if we have somebody that are working thirty hours, same as anybody else's employee for the township, we're going to have to offer them the same type of benefits. I don't see us getting around that in any way, shape, or form.
I agree.
Thank you. Call from the board.
We just did that.
We did, that's... And typically, that, not to not answer your question, but during public comment, it's not interaction-type situation, it's just a comment by you, the one we could address from the board.
Okay, thank you.
No call from the board?
No.
Okay.
I've got myself in enough trouble already.
The motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn the meeting at 7:02.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Gurley, supported by Trustee Clifford. Again, any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Need to adjourn to it.